Hello everyone and welcome to the Long COVID Web Town Hall meeting. Thank you very much for joining us again. This is Karen, I'm the Director for Long COVID Web and will be facilitating this meeting. First of all, we wish to acknowledge this land on which the Long COVID Web operates. For thousands of years, it has been the traditional land of the Huron-Wendat, the Seneca, the Mississaugas of the credit. Today, this meeting place is still the home to many indigenous people from across Turtle Island. And we're grateful to have the opportunity to work on this land. So before we start, just a few housekeeping items. Firstly, please note that the meeting will be recorded and will be published on our website for those who have not been able to attend today. Secondly, we will keep everyone muted and the camera off during the presentation. And please feel free to use the chat box to type your questions at any time. We will be monitoring the questions and answering them in the chat box. And we'll also get to the unanswered questions right after each presentation. You may be asked to unmute and elaborate on the questions if needed. For the presentations, we have 15 minutes for the talk and five minutes for the questions. I will be showing a hand when there is one minute left for the presentation, so please be mindful of time. So we have three presentations today and the agenda has now been shared on the chats. So without further ado, we are on to our first presentation for the Long COVID Web Evidence Gap Map for Prioritization, Dr. Pio Schmending.
Right, thanks Karen and the group for inviting me to speak. Of course, as we have this conversation, I can't find my talk on my thing, but it'll take me a moment. Give me one moment. Thanks again, my name is Pio, I'm a pediatric respiratoryologist at the University of Alberta and I'm on the executive and my, myself and my postdoc are working on helping Long COVID Web figure out, you know, where the gaps and some of the prioritization work. I would say it's not our, we are working with the group on figuring these things out. We just happen to be the collators of the data. But like the, the process is meant to be a collaborative inclusive process. So with that, this is kind of like the finish, which is that at the end of the time before we meet in June and have like a Delphi process and things, we have a rough idea of what is going on in our world. So this is a, this is the Evidence Gap Map for some of you who aren't familiar, which up until about a month ago, I was not familiar, so I'm learning every day. On the X axis is different types of domains of research in this Evidence Gap Map. It happens to be based on the Evidence Gap Map that EpiMapper, and I'll show you what that is. We've amended a little bit on the Y axis, which is study type. And then there's a Z axis, which is what are the interests of Long COVID Web? We've also added three more axes or yeah, so I guess there are more axes. So there's like a color coding, which has to do with what are we able to do? What have we done already? That's the colors, then there's the circles or how much data is there? And because this area is evolving continually, AKA I just found out one minute ago about a JAMA paper published last night on symptoms associated with long COVID, which I just pulled up one minute ago. There is this, there is a light yellow, light blue, which is like, what are some of the studies in process? As an example, there are 388 randomized trials in a recent systematic review that are ongoing in long COVID. So I think part of this is a plan to be a living map where as evidence goes from studies in progress to publish research, the map will update. So that's kind of like the where are we and where are we going ultimately? So an overview of the process, so the first thing is how do we generate, what are the gaps? And this is a living map that already exists by EpiMapper out of the UK. And one thing to note, so they have treatment, transmission, that type of thing on the X axis, which we will probably use because it's going to be the least path of least resistance. The, the difference is their Y axis is right now time. And so we have connected with them and they've been super helpful in working with us and are willing to amend their long COVID map, the Evidence Gap Map to have type of study as the Y axis. And so what I thought was going to be a almost insurmountable amount of work will now be a somewhat surmountable amount of work. Thanks to the amazing help of the group out of the UK that are doing this. You know, one of their motivations for helping us, they was, is that they would like to see this work used and, and the application, and so they've been extremely helpful in that regard. So after the Evidence Gap Map, this is kind of like what the map, what we will have, which will just be this two dimensional project, which have types of studies or types of studies on the Y axis and you know, the domains on the X axis. It's not going to be quite perfect. And there will be some subdomains that the UK group will not have. And so for some of the subdomains, we are thinking of using Cohere or some sort of natural language processor to throw in some of the studies and to see what we get. Can we start to look at, there is a Google map, Google Doc on the top end, where we've invited individuals and we can send it out to those who are interested to kind of comment on the domains and the, what alternate X axes or dive, deep dives within the X axes that may not be available within the UK group. And so from that, from that, maybe there's a role to use some of these natural language processors to help deep dive and get some sub, sub genres within the treatment category. This is an example of Cohere, actually a Toronto based company, where they already have a classifier built into their natural language processor. And so we would then start to work with that classifier and see how well it does. Basically, it's a chance to play around with some of the newer technology. So once we have an Evidence Gap Map and that two dimensions and with some deep dives, then the next part of that Evidence Gap Map is what is our current capacity? And you will have seen a survey and hopefully you will answer that survey as to what is the web doing? And so this is some of the early output from that, from that questionnaire already, so please have your voice heard by answering the questionnaire. This is the air table, which has which projects are in the biomedical sphere? And what are some of their projects that they're working or areas of research that they're doing? What are some of the clinical areas and what are some of the project health services areas? So it really does break it down and these themes are based on what was in some of the original grants. For example, developing and validating biomarkers for PCC, there's 10 individual, 10 individuals, not projects. Actually, you can correct me if I'm wrong later, that are related to that area within the biomedical group. So this is how we'll start to figure out what is our capacity based on response to the questionnaire. You may get some, my postdoc and others are working through that questionnaire data and people will get some refined questions to figure out what our capacity is. There's another table, which is like, what's our capacity in terms of primary data collection, secondary analysis, so again, registry, so really getting a feel for what the data looks like. Different views on human or non-human projects. And then do you have samples, what type of samples, what's the end? So really, the idea is that that fourth dimension, the color will have some depth to it to be able to give people a real sense of what's going on. That, that project and all which is on Google Docs and I don't know what we'll use eventually. I think EpiMapper has worked with us and said that they're willing to amend that to their graphical outputs that they have to be able to make that a multi-dimensional visual that will be in continual evolution as the, as Long COVID Web develops and executes on projects. Okay, so I'm going to move on. So by the end of the survey, I'm hoping and work with EpiMapper and that, we will have this type of a figure, which is like what's going on, the blue, what's, what's happening? Or what's happened, the dark blue, the what's going on, the light blue? And kind of what's our capacity and these will be the shaded boxes. So then there's the last dimension is what are our interests? And the reason to ask that is because I don't know if anyone, I was just at a talk on project management and I've been on many talks on project management. And you know, people have to want to work in a space to commit the time to do it. So we need to find out what are our interests and who's willing to, to take the, if you've ever heard of the RACI format, who's willing to take the A, be accountable for that project happening? And so in that space, we will have some follow-up surveys and there will be some sort of five point like or scale, which will eventually lead to some sort of figure like this, where some of these tools, some of these things that we can do are interested in doing, no one's really willing to drive the agenda. And so it falls as to less interesting, even though it is no less important. But you know, at the end of the day, we need to figure out what's going on and what are we interested in doing? And who's willing to spend the time, money, effort, energy in order to get those answers? Because those are the things that then we, at those intersection points are where we can start to figure out our priorities. So once the figure is done, then we'll have a priorities discussion. And we'll use a Delphi method at that meeting. You know, the Delphi method for those who are not familiar has a four step process. So we have a problem area, which we've obviously identified around long COVID, figuring out who's going to be at the meeting, which we're working on with the steering committee and a few others, then some Delphi rounds, which is an anonymous panel of experts or the panel members with some feedback and an iterative process, and then we have to have some closing criteria. And so this is the Delphi process, there's an assessment of the rounds results. Either there's agreement or disagreement and then either it's stable or not. And then you cycle around until you figure out, yes, we have an agreement here or not. And so we'll try to figure out a role for the Delphi process. I think the group out of Saskatchewan has kindly lent their Delphi support for us to develop what the Delphi process is going to be for June. So again, a shout out to that group in Saskatchewan, Dr. Groot's work, Gary Groot's work and their, and their team in, in supporting the Delphi process and supporting the Delphi process here. Again, these things, these are, it's a village and it takes, it takes a, or I'm a pediatrician, pediatric respiratoryologist. So it takes a village to raise a child and it's going to take a village here as well. So I'm going to skip over the strengths and weaknesses part of it. It will be available for those who want to review. But it's a good, a time can be a bit time consuming, but it has a nice flexibility and really provides for a fulsome conversation. So just to summarize where we're at, so the problem area, we're going to leverage the Long COVID Evidence Gap Map survey to identify our current strengths and a survey to identify our interests. We have confirmed, we're working on getting the correct panel members and we're working on a level of consensus for the June meeting. But hopefully by the end of it, we will have some idea as to the set of priorities for Long COVID Web that are rooted in the current evidence and current interests and current strengths. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Pio. So we have about five minutes for questions and feel free to raise your hand. I see that we don't have any questions from the chat. Feel free to raise your hand if you have any questions for this talk.
I'm available and hopefully it wasn't clear as mud and that's why there's no answer, there's no questions. But again, I'm excited, it's not a process that I've done a lot of with the Evidence Gap Maps and things like that. But Dr. Karen Quinn, who's on this, who's speaking later, really introduced me to, to this and I've embraced it. We've reached out to the group out of McMaster, if that's what you're asking, from their scoping review that they've just recently completed. Wodich, Wokanich? No, sorry, I've forgotten the last name, but starts with a W at any rate. And we've reached out to them to kind of figure out what their scoping review results were so that we can incorporate that in. So if that's what you're referring to, then the answer is yes.
Nadine, please feel free to unmute and have your question.
Yes, hi, I was I'm a bit late for the presentations, I apologize, I may have missed something, but of a child who has long COVID and she's been three years in. Question about the data component in terms of how data is going to be loaded, because a lot of the studies coming out of and other countries, longitudinal studies are one of the key drivers to assess long COVID symptoms, symptomology and so forth. Think that's going to be a very big challenge for data being assessed here in Canada. Not just from a, from kids perspective, but even from adults, right? So in terms in general, so I just, I, I suppose if it's maybe more like a comment for but I'm curious how, what sort of thinking has gone behind the projects and the work that's going to be done for assessing data? Because that's a very big challenge, as we all know. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it, it, it's a, it's a very important question. I promise you, I am championing pediatrics as hard as I can, given I'm a pediatric respiratoryologist. But I think like if, if the question is a little bit broader than that, which is like, how is there the consideration of what's going to happen? I think that there is a whole pillar too, that's dedicated to like figuring out definitions of long COVID, not just for adults or for children, but for both. And working through that process of like, what are some of the studies that are going on? I think like what, one of the things that, some of the things that we've talked about within that pillar are around around ensuring that the work that we do advances the science. And sometimes that's going to be novel and sometimes that's going to be validating some fantastic work that's already been going on. But, but I think that, you know, I think that's where we felt the preliminary work, the Evidence Gap Maps and things like that were really important because it's hard to know where to go unless you understand the path that you've already taken to get there, to use as, to use a a metaphor. So that's part of where we're at is to figure out where are we at? I certainly have reviewed the pediatric literature and would want to see a lot more quality.
Thank you, Pio. There's a few questions from the chat. The first one is from Cleon Hamilton, was color blindness considered for the map? And Lauren commented EDI policy.
Yep, so apologies and we'll amend to make sure that it's consistent with the EDI policies.
Thank you. And there's another question from Carrie Anna. The call for proposals require a patient prioritization process. Would they be possible to explain how the surveys and Delphi process will center patient priorities? What are the roles for clinicians and researchers versus patients?
Right, so I believe that patient partners are included in the initial survey. And so their, their voice will be heard there. And patient partners are included in our June prioritization meeting. And so patient, patient partners and their priorities will be included there. I believe this is meant to be a collaborative hand-in-hand partnership as we work through the priorities and, and our capability, the Canadian context capabilities. So longitudinally will be included throughout the entire process from survey one all the way through.
Thank you, Pio. I saw another two hands, I don't know if the questions were addressed. So a comment from Lauren in the chat. The patient advisory council will be meeting to go over the proposals in advance, the June meeting. Also, we have two representatives we will be sending to the June meeting. So we will move on to the second talk, which is the pillar three health services research updates by Doctors Karen Quinn and Navid General.
Thank you, Karen. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for taking the time to join the town hall today. I'm Karen Quinn, I'm a clinician scientist at the University of Toronto and Sinai Health System. I practice as a general internist and a palliative care clinician. And with Dr. Genjua are the co-leads of pillar three, which is the health services research pillar for the Long COVID Web. So I have a very brief set of slides to, to talk through our part one today. And then Navid will take over and explain part two. So ultimately, our goal is really to improve the identification of Canadians living with long COVID. And we want to be able to do that so that we can study their health services to identify gaps in the care and really with the larger goal of improving care for people living with long COVID. So with that in mind, the first foundational project that was agreed upon by the pillar was to develop what's called a validated case ascertainment algorithm. And that is able to identify Canadians living with long COVID in routinely collected linked health administrative data. Put more simply, we're looking to be able to identify people who, who are living with long COVID in big data. And there's a lot, each province or many of the provinces and territories in Canada all have large data centers that collect this data at a population level, which really allows us to study and improve healthcare delivery. And because we're doing this in this collaboration of the web, we're hoping to do this at a near national level or national level, again, with the goal of improving care. So this is just the main and the only other slide I'm going to talk to you about before handing it over to Navid and I'll walk you through it. So what we are proposing is a one-year set of studies or steps to ultimately help achieve our goal. In the red box on the far left, sort of step one is first to understand what we have when it comes to different data sets across Canada. And the goal there is to really be able to compile and publish a national data atlas, both for our work, but also to support many others who might be interested in using this type of data to study and improve care. Part of that will need to look at a scan of the different clinical cohorts, which actually relates to one of the questions in Pio's talk that was asked about that. So there are many different research teams who have longitudinally and prospectively studied and identified people living with long COVID. And so we want to find out what's out there and what we could use to be able to compare our administrative data sets to those who are in clinical cohorts and, and help find some alignment there. The second part is to harmonize all of the different data that are the different provinces and territories and what we're calling metadata, so that we can find those common measures that we can use and data sets that can be used for the purposes of our administrative data project. Step two, which is the sort of orange-yellow box in the middle here, is to create a new consensus-based definition for Canada that is oriented towards the identification of people living with long COVID in administrative data. The major, major limitation of administrative data right now is that it does not contain symptoms or symptom measures. And you can imagine that people living with long COVID suffer with many symptoms. And that's in fact, the W, the World Health Organization's clinical case definitions is related to the symptoms and the burden and persistence of those symptoms. So we are going to do a systematic search of looking at all different operationalized definitions for long COVID across the globe that use these different approaches to try to identify people in administrative data sets. And also can create our own definition based on those with a Delphi process that Pio's just described very nicely in his, in his presentation. That will involve patients first and foremost, along with clinicians and research experts and other people who are relevant to this, this work. Ultimately, on the bottom bullet point there, we will use those clinical cohorts that we've identified across the country. It's what's called a reference standard, something that you compare your algorithm that you've developed to what is the reference or sometimes, you know, the, the truth, so to speak. And you can compare and then report on its performance by having something to compare to, that makes sense. In the box on the right, then is to actually perform the analysis to validate those algorithms that we've come up with. And so there's many different validation type studies that you do to, to look at that. And ultimately, you report on the performance of those algorithms. You can measure things like sensitivity, specificity, positive predictive value. There are different measures that tell you about the performance of those algorithms. And importantly, we seek to, to develop multiple algorithms because not any single algorithm may be fit for the purposes of a research study or, or clinical objective. So in being able to develop multiple and report on their performance, people can choose the one that's most suited and aligned with their research objectives. And lastly, we can look at the face validity or the feasibility in provinces and territories that they don't have a reference standard and, and report on both age and sex aggregated prevalence, for example, of long COVID in those provinces without, or territories without a reference standard to get a sense if the algorithms are at least performing in the right ballpark. So that is the, the first step of pillar three's foundational work. And it's really will set up a huge program of research that will ultimately aim to improve care for people living with long COVID across Canada. And I'm going to turn it over to Navid now, who's going to take you through a little bit of the details of how you do that algorithm development work, because his team in BC has, has already published one. And I'll turn it over to you now, Navid.
Thank you, Karen, so for setting the stage. So I, I will walk us through some of the work that was done in BC to develop an algorithm based on the data that was available to us from a clinical cohort, as well as in the administrative data set. And that will help us to see what kind of approach we will take going forward in developing some of these algorithms. And before I begin, I would like to acknowledge that this work was carried out and I live on the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of Coast Salish peoples, including territories of Muslim, Squamish and Slavotup nations. And I really feel privileged to be living and working here on this land as an uninvited settler. So as Karen highlighted, the healthcare utilization data are really vital for informing some of the care related aspects related to long COVID. However, one of the major problem is that not all patients are diagnosed. And those who are diagnosed, they are not assigned long COVID diagnostic course. Usually when we do studies using healthcare administrative data sets, we have like these diagnostic codes and we use these for assessing a health measure or, or a health outcome or a status. But in, in case of long, long COVID, these diagnostic codes were, they became available recently and they are not assigned. And, and of course, like the diagnosis is really under ascertain. So that's where like we embark on, on an effort to identify and certain symptoms or conditions and develop an algorithm which could identify individuals who are living with long, long COVID using administrative data sets in, in BC. And this will help inform work across Canada. So what we did, so we used a platform that was set up for COVID response in British Columbia that includes data on all COVID-related data sets, including all data on all individuals who were tested for COVID, all diagnosed cases, hospitalizations, lab test results, like sequencing results, variants of concerns, et cetera, vaccinations, demographics on all individuals in British Columbia, and then all administrative healthcare data sets, including medical visits, hospitalizations, prescriptions and, and so on. And most of these data sets are updated on daily basis, some are on weekly or monthly basis. So that enabled us to do surveillance for various conditions and that's where like we use this data. So within the cohort, we also have data available from a post-COVID recovery clinic in, in British Columbia. So we use that as a, as a reference standard or a goal standard. So this is an overall approach that we took. So we, we identified people who are living with long COVID through this clinical cohort from clinics. And then we identified people who did not have long COVID based on the, based on not being included in the clinic data, as well as not having some of the diagnostic codes related to COVID. And then we identified various conditions and symptoms and developed a model. And, and as Karen described, like we usually come up with a model that has optimal sensitivity, specificity and other characteristics. And then these characteristics or that model with the optimal characteristics was then applied to rest of the data to identify individuals who may be living with long COVID. So overall, if you look at the flow, how we went about, so for this time period, we had about 168,000 individuals who were diagnosed with COVID. And we had about 2,400 people who were diagnosed with long COVID through clinics or through the diagnostic code, where very small proportion was through diagnostic codes. Most of these individuals were diagnosed in Most of these individuals were diagnosed in post-COVID recovery clinics. And we then identified about twenty four thousand non-long COVID patients to create a. What we call this as development data sets. And these are the data sets in which we develop this model. As I explained that we develop a regression model based on symptoms and other conditions. And then apply it to the application data set. So what kind of characteristics we used in the model? So we looked at pre-existing conditions that people had before their COVID infection. We looked at COVID related variables such as variants and so on. Then we looked at various demographic variables, age, et cetera. Then we looked at socioeconomic status and related variables and geographic variables. And 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 lastly, we looked at the conditions, diagnostic codes and symptoms that could be available in administrative data sets between. Twenty eight days after initial infection to one hundred and eighty three days for this study period. So based on that, we identified a lot of different models and we selected one model that that. Maximized the sensitivity and specificity of of prediction. And we selected a model that that had eighty six percent sensitivity and eighty six percent specificity. And area under the curve was ninety three percent, ninety three percent. Through this model, we identified about twenty five thousand people living with long COVID. Among one hundred and forty one individuals who were diagnosed with long COVID. So I will stop here and we could take up questions that people may have.
Thank you very much, Kira and Navid. So we have two questions, Adriana and then Lauren.
Thank you so much. You mentioned that there's identified cases and if I understood correctly, that's coming from. The long COVID clinics in B C, but what happens to? All the patients who are not being counted because of. Lack of education on the physicians who doesn't believe in long COVID or. Don't identify long COVID, so a lot of the patients suffering with long COVID have given up going to the doctors. And or trying to go into the clinics because they don't see it useful or feel validated. So I think the number that you quoted is significantly lower than the actual figure. So is there any way that you can address that?
Yeah, so in fact, this was the whole objective of developing these algorithms that we know that. Individuals are not being diagnosed with long COVID. Lack of definitions or criteria or classification or lack of expertise at this stage. And and that is where like we use that small subset of individuals who are diagnosed. And then developed a model to identify additional individuals within the overall data sets. And that these individuals were identified based on their symptoms or condition. And that's really at the end, we identified twenty five thousand individuals out of one hundred and forty one thousand. So that roughly comes to around eighteen, twenty percent of individuals living with long COVID. In fact, like this is a little bit on the higher side compared to some of the survey or other data that came out from Canada or other places. But it's comparable to some other places where they have shown about twenty percent. Of individuals developing developing some kind of symptoms related to long COVID. Uh, Lauren?
Hi. I can't turn on my camera, but you can imagine what I look like. I know the four holy grails we're looking for are the underlying mechanism, diagnostic markers. And that's in tandem with your work, trying to find a way to diagnose this before we have them, treatment and then prevention. I heard you say not all patients have been diagnosed with P C C. I find your percentages low. Looking at the the study I'm more familiar with is Patrick Archimbeau's Cedrin study. And they use the W H O definition of P C C. But what they did is they asked patients, since you were in a merge, have you had any of these symptoms? Not, do you have long COVID? And we're looking at almost half. They did find people in the group in a merge who'd tested, not tested positive for COVID. But we know from the Italian town study. That forty percent of the people who were PCR positive for COVID. Were asymptomatic and when they retested two weeks later, that forty percent was still asymptomatic. So you take forty percent of forty percent and that's the seventeen percent that Cedrin found with. Long COVID symptoms, it's unlikely to have been another pathogen causing this because in the first. Year of the pandemic during lockdown, you can look at flu influenza statistics. And the highest was two percent of normal and B C had zero. So I think your numbers may be low and I think addressing under diagnosis as you're looking at is so important. And can you also talk about how, what? Communication lines you have going so that as markers are developed that are definitive diagnostic markers. You can integrate them in what you're doing.
Thank you, Lauren, for bringing up all these points. So as you could imagine, so the whole idea behind this work was to start to identify some. Characteristics through which we could identify individuals within these healthcare administrative data sets. And as Karen started, these data sets are not really great in terms of capturing some of the symptoms. That we may find among individuals living with long COVID. And that's where we want to continue, this is a starting work. It's the initial baseline and we want to kind of work on the clinical cohorts that we have. Or that are coming across Canada to refine some of these algorithms. Because this is like really critical to estimate the accurate or or. Burden of long COVID or people living with long COVID. So that we could inform services from that point of view. So this is like the initial estimates, these these estimates were similar to some of the other studies. But these studies may also have been as you 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 were highlighting, maybe under diagnosing or under ascertaining. Individuals living with long COVID. And that's where like we will need to continue to look at how we refine these algorithms with more clinical data. And and update our our numbers as we go along. And and that will be the main pursuit from the pillar three as we go forward with that.
And I'll just add that we recognize that there is a lot of bias in in who is being seen and how these diagnoses are being made. That is the importance of having a very diverse. Panel of experts and the experts include many people with lived experience who are living with long COVID as part of our ongoing iterative process. Because the previous data hasn't gotten it all right. And so if you are interested in being part of this work and and being, you know, part of the the Delphi panel for this work. We would love to have you be involved because it really is important that we have these diverse perspectives that will only strengthen our work further.
Yeah, I would definitely echo that, like we need a patient partners, a part of this process and work so that we could. We we work together and develop these algorithms. And as Karen highlighted, so so the initial patient population that was coming to these clinics. Has different characteristics and that's where we will need to look into. How we could overcome some of these limitations and that's the idea like we have been having discussions within pillar three. What are some of the limitations, what are some of the gaps and how we could overcome some of these gaps? And and definitely, we will need to refine these algorithms as we go along.
Thank you, Navid and Karen. So just be mindful of the time, Nadine, Gaston and Elizabeth. Please feel free to type your questions in the chat box. So we could see if we have more time towards the end, we can bring your questions back.
I can also try to address them in in text as well in the meantime.
Thank you. Okay, so our last talk of the town hall is pillar four, population health updates by Dr. Gary Groot and Alan Rafferty.
Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to share some of the work that we're doing in pillar four. Let me share my screen if I can find the dot. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So I, pillar four, if you look at the original grant application, sort of has two two major components associated with it. One of them, I have been co-leading and the other, my colleague Ellen Rafferty has. And we're going to each take turns speaking to the part that we've been working on. I'm, you have to forgive me, I'm a general surgical oncologist. And that's my normal clinical practice, don't, don't hold that against me. The the my research home is actually in community health and epidemiology. And that's where, how I got connected with this work first with during the pandemic and then and now through the long COVID web. And Ellen is a professor in, I'm from the University of Saskatchewan. Ellen is professor in the University of Alberta with with an expertise in health economics. Just want to quickly add my land acknowledgement, I live on treaty six land in the homeland of Maytee in Saskatchewan. And and I see long COVID is one of those illnesses, much like COVID, where they're. The underserved populations of Canada were more heavily impacted. And so this is a piece of the the work that I do in terms of. Trying to address truth and reconciliation is to ensure as best as possible that the voices of my indigenous colleagues are heard at the tables that I work in. So as I said, there's really two big pieces of work in the original grant that were pillar four work. One was the development of a long COVID patient registry. And the other was to do economic and simulation modeling and I'll speak to the first of those and I'll let Ellen speak to the second. So the goal around the patient registry was one that we built into the the. Grant because we felt that that was sort of core, sort of foundational work for not just pillar four, but for all of. All of the pillars to be able to understand the epidemiology and the the scope of of. Long COVID in Canada and we heard a lot of that sort of in the conversation already today. Where not everybody that's being seen in long COVID clinics is being captured. And so we don't, I think we have a, we have some insight, but I'm not so sure that it's complete at this point in time. And then, and if you look across the country, there's lots of people doing, doing, having sort of registries and longitudinal studies. But there isn't consistency around what we're asking. So we're looking, we thought we would start, we had a conversation early on after the long COVID web was formed with Public Health Agency of Canada. There was interest there, but we felt that in order to to really have a registry, we needed to have a consistent minimum data set that we would be able to. Put into a registry because the registry is going to be a complex thing and it has to be housed somewhere. But we have to be collecting the the right data to enter into a registry. So our initial work for here was to try and think of a consensus Delphi approach for Canada. With Canadian input where we would say these are the minimum data points that we're trying to collect. One of our steering committee meetings, we had a conversation about whether, what's the difference between a minimum data set and a comprehensive data set? And I think clearly it would be hard to capture everything around symptoms and. And things like that related to long COVID, so that would be too cumbersome. We're trying to capture sort of what are the minimum questions we should be asking people in a, in a comprehensive national survey. Where we have this huge collection of data that could inform further work for the next years to come. We've, we got started on this courtesy of a Spore National Award that I hold. And that, so we we've been able to get support, we're doing this, actually, we're working very collaboratively with particularly pillar three. The work that that we're trying to do, I think informs what they're trying to do and vice versa. So we're quite excited to be doing this together with them as well as with pillar two. And we're, we're bringing together a group of researchers, clinicians, patient partners, policymakers to to try and come up with this consensus approach. We've already completed a literature review, which was an environmental scan of long COVID surveys that were done in Canada and the U S and actually internationally. To see what were the, what were the elements that were being asked. And we had a, an early meeting of our group and and it was pointed out that. If we, if we restrict ourselves to what's being asked in these surveys, historical surveys that are that are currently in place. We may well miss important things that we we'd like to see in the registry. So our very first round of our Delphi process will will invite people to add other important elements that are new and emerging. That maybe not captured well in the the current literature. So that we're, we're to the best of our ability, having a a minimum data set that captures everything that people are experiencing. And that was brought up mostly by patient partners and I can't emphasize that enough that we, the input from our patient partners in in this work on long COVID is. Is critical because they're the ones with the lived experience, they're the ones that are, that have, that inform the research that's going to happen. From here, we'll collect, we'll have a. A panel that will be selected and then we'll do two to three rounds. And try and come up with this consensus statement that would inform modifications to longitudinal studies and inform the national registry. We think that this will allow us to have a large repository of consistent data that can be used for future research and and work with. With long COVID members. And we think we are, we're pretty confident this will provide that, that, that basis for consistency and. And data for the the long COVID web. And then from there, we'll continue having conversations about the development of a registry. But we thought the the minimum database was sort of the starting point for that. And I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Rafferty to to tell us a little bit about what we're doing with the economic and simulation modeling.
Thanks, Gary. Yeah, so I thought it would be a good idea to just kind of go over briefly what. Simulation and economic modeling can do for post-COVID condition and all the other research that we heard about today that we've talked about in general. Because I know this is, you know, a big group with a, with a variety of backgrounds. So I think I'll start there and then touch on some of the ongoing work, noting this is a very small part of the work that is ongoing. In Canada, there is, you know, there's a lot of great work that is, that is continuing and and we're still kind of getting a sense of all the, all the work that. That is being done across, across Canada. So if you can just move it to the next slide, Gary. So first, I'll start with simulation modeling. And so simulation is really a representation of a process that is occurring in the real world. And we can see how this would be relevant for post-COVID condition in so many different ways. You know, a lot of the discussion today about under diagnosis and representing that population, you can represent that. In models, you can represent the people who are connecting with the healthcare system and then the people who aren't. And how that's, you know, impacting their quality of life, how that is. Um, impacting healthcare needs in the future, how that changes across time. So we can represent how post-COVID condition develops following acute COVID nineteen. How different risk factors contribute to that, how vaccination contributes to that, all as part of this model. And then we can move that on, as I mentioned, to the connection with the healthcare system. And how these patients are connecting with the healthcare system. You know, who are they going to see, is it, is it their family physicians and and are those family physicians not? You know, not picking up on it, not really listening to their experience. So you can, you can put those in models. And then you can also start to evaluate interventions for P C C and look at, you know, where we might have. The biggest contribution, where we might have the biggest impact on on both post-COVID conditions as well as preventing post-COVID. So those are just a few examples of representations of processes that I've heard of and I've seen. It also is a great way to synthesize data. So the data being collected. So the data being collected from pillar three, you know, on, um, those people that are actually connecting with the healthcare system could be one of the data elements amongst many. So maybe use that plus the registry to get a sense of what is under diagnosis, who, what populations are most likely to be under diagnosed. Um, so I think it's a great way to synthesize data. You can, you can use clinical trial data, real world data as well as patient experiences. And I think this is a new area of modeling that is really important and just starting to be explored where these models are being developed in collaboration with patients to make sure they're representing their, their experience. And I think this is something I, our pillar would be really interested in, in pursuing. And also give the ability to demonstrate how a situation develops across time. So it's not just one time point, but as I think was discussed earlier, kind of that longitudinal viewpoint of how, how, uh, you know, post-COVID condition develops across time. And it allows those kind of what-if questions. What if we, you know, were able to diagnose more patients? What are the impacts of that? What if we were able to, to treat post-COVID or whatever we're able to provide rehab to a larger proportion of the patients? So I think, I think there's a lot of interesting elements, um, that we can ask in what-if questions. And there are of course limitations with any of these things. Uh, you know, it is, we have to make simplifying assumptions. We can include everything involved in the real world in a model. Um, but I think, um, that's a limitation we're okay with. It also has limited prediction power. You know, we can't use these to predict far into the future about what, what's going to happen. And that's true of a lot of, a lot of these analyses and you need data to inform the model. And that's why I'm very excited, you know, pillar four is creating that, that, uh, minimum data set to be involved in that, you know, to include the modeling needs in that as well, I think is really important. Move to the next slide, Gary. So then there's economic modeling and this kind of builds on simulation modeling. Often we add the economics as part of the simulation modeling. Um, economics allows us to measure burden of disease. Uh, so the healthcare costs associated with long COVID productivity or labor impacts or how people are able or not able to return to the workforce. And then of course, patient and caregiver costs, so the costs associated with traveling to care um, for over the counter medications, any, anything like that. Uh, we would like to capture as well in that burden, burden of, of disease element. We can also evaluate, um, the cost effectiveness as post-COVID interventions. Um, and, and look at where we might get the biggest bang for the buck. You know, we have limited funds to, to spend on interventions often. So where can we really impact patient lives? And then, um, one element that might be new to a lot of people is value of information analysis where we have so much uncertainty in, in the data elements and we have to kind of pick where we focus and start to narrow down that uncertainty and value of information. Analysis can provide us information on where it might be best spent to really focus our resources on, on getting more, more and better data. So, so that's what economic modeling can do. And then, so just briefly touching on some ongoing work. So in terms of simulation modeling, we are really starting to, to collect the data that is relevant to ongoing modeling of this area and, and you know, talk to patient partners about where, where the data gaps really are. Um, there's been a big interest on the impact on underserved or marginalized uh, populations because that has been done very, uh, not very often in the, in the literature. So I think there's, you know, there's a big gap there. In terms of economic modeling, my team is looking at healthcare costs and productivity, productivity loss associated with post-COVID condition in Canada. So really focus on more the system level costs. Um, but I hope with the patient registry, we can start to think about those patient level costs as well. Um, as well as looking at estimating healthcare labor supply and demand associated with post-COVID condition. So how, how is demand for healthcare labor going to, going to change over time as, you know, the people with post-COVID condition move through the healthcare system? As well as, you know, healthcare workers were like largely impacted by the pandemic at the start, uh, especially at the start of the pandemic prior to vaccination. And so there's probably a large proportion of them with post-COVID condition. How is that going to impact our labor supply? Um, but we're still deciding on, uh, future areas of focus. You know, I think the work discussed, you know, first as part of this conversation will really contribute to where, where we want to go next. And we're really interested in, in your feedback on where we think, um, modeling and economics can support uh, the research. And I'll leave it there because I know we don't have a lot of time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ellen and Gary. So we're now having three minutes for questions. I see there's a lot of great discussion in the chat. So if there's no questions for the current presentation, uh, we, yes, Gaston.
So my question is, uh, when, when we're talking about post-COVID condition, obviously, uh, the purpose of the case definition will matter depending upon what your objective is. Uh, if we're thinking about the consequence of someone who's still having symptoms, uh, three months after the onset of disease, or if we're talking about someone with, uh, a, a consequences lasting a year or more, uh, that will make a huge difference. And in that sense, I think that, uh, all the presentations do intersect uh, with this question about what, what is, uh, worth working on in terms of the case definition? Because the impact for the healthcare system, uh, differs a lot. And, and so what, what I think is, uh, is difficult when we were talking about a long COVID uh, registry, uh, we, we certainly want to have people with lasting consequences of their COVID and not necessarily short term, even if six months is not short for those who are, uh, sick with it. But I think that, uh, trying to get a single um, case definition or algorithm will probably not be adequate because the purposes of the different researchers, uh, will vary. And for some, if you want to look at associations between post-COVID conditions and some aspects, you need to have highly specific case definition. Whereas if you want to have, uh, you know, the burden on the healthcare system, you want to have maybe more of a sensitive case definition. And, and so that's, that's my point that we, we are in a, in a situation where we will probably have to use several case definitions depending upon the purpose of the research.
I, I could just like quickly respond. Yes, not really great point. And that's what the intention is. To develop multiple case definitions with high specificity versus high sensitivity. And also looking into a longitudinal aspect. I think that is very important, like whether there is persistence and at what time and so on. So all of these questions are really pertinent. And we had like great discussions within pillar three with respect to looking at these aspects. Thank you very much for your call.
Thank you, Navid and Gaston. So there's one last question from Sue. Are you looking at work accommodations, job modifications as cost-effective PCC interventions? Most accommodations are low cost. How can this be incorporated?
Yeah, I was actually just typing a response to Sue. Um, I, yes, we are definitely looking at that more, more specifically in the nursing supply question where one of the goals of that work is to uh, come up with potential, uh, interventions. Uh, and you know, key workplace interventions is, is one of them. So I, I think I sent her after the meeting yesterday, I think I sent her team an email about potentially collaborating on that work. So hopefully we can do that. Okay. Thanks, Sue.
Thank you, everyone. So we are already at one-on-one. Uh, thank you all for all the speakers and the great presentations. So we'll continue the monthly town hall. And for the next one, we will be, uh, giving updates on the other pillar activities. So thank you very much for joining us today. The video will be available online on our website for those who are missing part of it and not attending. Thank you very much.